All right. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Glasgow City Council. If you'll stand and join me in our pledge to the flag.
Pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. Councilman Freddie Norris will lead us in our invocation.
I'm going to read this prayer. I don't normally do that. This prayer is written by Ronald Reagan and following up the excellent program yesterday at the cemetery, the memorial service, the excellent lieutenant who spoke. It was amazing and I think it was good. It gave inspiration to all of us. And let's remember also Stephanie's brother, who's had a terrible accident. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, husband. To preserve our blessed land, we must look to God. It is time to realize that we need God more than he needs us. Let us, young and old, join together, as did the first Continental Congress, in the first step, in humble heartfelt prayer. Let us do so for the love of God and his great goodness, in search of his guidance and the grace of repentance, in seeking his blessings, his peace, and the resting of his kind and holy hands on ourselves, our nation, our friends, in the defense of freedom and all mankind, now and always. The time has come to turn to God and reassert our trust in him for the healing of America. Our country is in need of and ready for a spiritual renewal. Today, we utter no prayer more fervently than the ancient prayer for peace on earth. Heavenly Father, thank you for your amazing love, each one of us precious in your sight. We know we're unworthy, that we trip along and we fall along and we make mistakes, but you're so good. You look beyond that tripped thing that we did to what we can become when we hold your hand and keep you in our heart. We pray, Lord, for this man, this precious father, brother, that you would be with him and bring him healing. Thank you for this group gathered tonight, especially our police and our fire and all those that keep us safe. May your hand be upon us as we work together to build a community that will honor you and love Jesus, for it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Freddie. You may be seated. I will move forward by asking our city clerk, Danielle Cashin, to call the roll. Ma'am.
Kirkpatrick. Trigg.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Benell.
Present.
Burris.
Here.
Lowry.
Here.
All right, we have 100% attendance. Thank you all for being here tonight. And let's move forward and approve the agenda that was sent to you back on, this would have been on Friday. You had the chance to look over it and I will entertain a motion that we move forward with the meeting using the agenda that was sent out.
Motion, Danielle.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Neal. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We will move forward with the agenda as it was presented to you like back on the Friday. And the first thing to do is to approve the minutes from our council meeting back on May the 12th. You've had those in your possession and I will entertain a motion. If they are correct, that we would enter them into the record. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
From Tommy. We need to then call the questions. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are into the record. Now we have some fun stuff to do right here. I'm going to move a microphone. I'm going to call Chief Guy Howey forward because we need to do a little swearing in here.
Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Nick Houchens. He is being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. During the lieutenant's process, it was clear to me that Nick has prepared himself for this leadership position. His demeanor and interview before the oral board was well received and received a lot of compliments. It's clear by his training record that he has made every effort to reach this position. And it's my honor tonight to make sure technology works. That I introduce Nick appropriately. Nick started with the Glasgow Police Department in 2012. It gives him 13 years and nine months of service. He's a, has associate degree in criminal justice from the Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College. He's been married 18 years to his wife Marcia, who is going to pin the badge on him tonight. And he is the father of a 15-year-old daughter, Presley. Nick, if you'll come up. Marcia.
Quite an honor, Nick. Appreciate that. And I'm going to read the oath and you will just. Detective, I will. And then we'll sign it in four places and then you will be a lieutenant, okay? Let me turn around over here where you can hear me. Are you ready? If you raise your right hand. I, Nicholas Houchens, a citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my abilities the duties of police lieutenant for the city of Glasgow, Kentucky, and that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So help me. Will you do that, sir?
I will.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thanks, sir.
Houchens. Now. All right, Marcia. Everybody's giving us round of, standing ovation and now you've got to make sure you don't stick him. Have you practiced this?
No.
Okay. Order to the rescue. All right, y'all turn around and get a good picture here. Congratulations. It was a good group. Thank you, sir.
Okay? Yes, sir.
All right, our next item of business. We have some Glasgow Fire Department members to swear in. I'm going to ask Benton Estes and Luke Penrose to come forward. Chief Tinsley, I haven't sworn in two since you've been the chief. You want to do them separately?
Well, you can do them at the same time. However you feel.
Well, I'm going to do them separately.
Okay.
All right, because that way we can have one. Who's going to give your, who's going to pen yours? Your mother is, okay. And we'll get her to come up here and then we'll get you penned, okay?
Before you get going, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you to celebrate Glasgow Fire Department's newest members, Ben Estes and Luke Penrose. Probationary firefighters Estes and Penrose have completed their training academy cycle and began with their shifts over this past Memorial Day weekend. I applaud these young men on a commitment to service, an eagerness to learn and an outstanding work ethic. I would also like to thank the families, loved ones and friends of Ben and Luke for your support and your sacrifice as these two begin a role in the service of those in need. They will need your support throughout their career. Mr. Mayor, I present to you for official swearing in and penning, probationary firefighters Ben Estes and Luke Penrose.
Congratulations. I see, Mr. Estes. I got you right here.
All right.
Going to pen your.
All three of mine.
All three of yours. Well, we better bring them up here then. I like, this penning thing is, I want to make sure we do it right. Do you know which ones of these are yours? Either one, okay. All right. Here. I'll pass these out. If you will raise your right hand, listen to me. I, Benton Estes, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of this Commonwealth and the Constitution of the United States and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of firefighter for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I, being a citizen of the United States, have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God. Do you attest to those statements? Congratulations, Benton Estes, firefighter. Now, y'all get up here. This is, you said, I believe you, she, you introduced her as your girlfriend, right? Okay, the girlfriend gets to do the first penning job here. Lot of pressure. All right, mom? All right, and dad? All right. Thank you very much and please welcome firefighter Benton Estes. You're a part of a wonderful group of individuals. And before you leave, I need to get you to sign this oath right here. And Ms. Elizabeth is going to let you use that ink pen, okay? We'll make it official. And now we want to move forward right here with Luke Penrose. Luke, there he is.
Good to have you here, sir.
Yes, sir.
Very excited about you becoming a part of a unit that we're very proud of. And your, mom's going to come up here and do this, aren't you?
Yes.
Practiced this at all?
I may or may not.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. Well, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Luke Penrose, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of this Commonwealth and the Constitution of the United States and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of firefighter for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I, being a citizen of this United States, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God. Do you agree with those statements made about you?
I do.
Congratulations, firefighter Luke Penrose. Welcome to the Glasgow Fire Department. All right, mom's going to do all three. I haven't heard that, that one before. There we go. Congratulations. You need a picture and then you, you got, you're in good shape. Okay, all right. Thank you all very much. Good job. And I'm going to, right here. If you'll sign these. Oh, Ms. Elizabeth, ink pen, then we'll. Got to do it in the right order. They go. Yeah, they let cattle. Yep. About that. Thank you all for your patience, but it's just, it's exciting when we have people coming and joining our police force, joining our fire department. We need to celebrate it for their sacrifice, for their dedication and for the amount of training that they have to go through just to get to this point. And we're tickled to death to have you all here. Now, we're going to move forward with our agenda and we have some old business to deal with. Next, Rich, on the agenda.
First item is an ordinance establishing an ethical conduct code applicable to the officers and employees of the city and its agencies. And I'll be reading from the summary that we read last meeting. This is an ordinance establishing a new code of ethics applicable to officers and employees of the city of Glasgow and its agencies. This ordinance finds that a code of ethics is necessary for the public trust and to assure that the public's confidence in the integrity of the city's officers and employees is maintained. This ordinance establishes standards of conduct for the city's officers and employees to assure that potential conflicts of interest are handled properly and that duties are faithfully performed and this ordinance is being enacted to meet the requirements of KRS 65.003. This ordinance defines certain words and phrases to be used in interpreting the code of ethics and establishes certain principles as it relates to conflicts of interest and the disclosures thereof, both general principles and those that pertain to contracting with the city of Glasgow. The ordinance establishes certain principles as it relates to incompatible offices, the withdrawal from participation in discussions of matters before the city, the receiving of gifts and the use of city property, equipment and personnel for private use. It prohibits nepotism and the representation of others in matters coming before the city or any of its agencies. It prohibits the misuse of confidential information. It prohibits a city employee or official from requesting a political campaign contribution from a subordinate or potential subordinate or requesting that they participate in any political activity and prohibits any political activity by a city employee or officer while on duty or by using any city funds, supplies, et cetera, for such purposes. This ordinance prohibits the promise of appointment or use of influence for any political activity or contribution. It establishes certain guidelines for a city employee or officer to be employed outside of his or her city responsibilities in order to avoid conflicts of interest. The ordinance prohibits accepting fees or honoraria for any speaking engagement that relate to an individual's employment or office with the city or from publicly endorsing products or services for their own personal or financial interest. This ordinance requires mandatory reporting of any potential ethics violations if an officer or an employee has reasonable suspicions to believe an ethical code violation has occurred. This ordinance establishes certain rules of professional behavior, including but not limited to a prohibition against falsely impugning the reputation of a city resident or fellow employee or officer. And it further establishes standards for attending all city meetings and the ethical use of social media and email. This ordinance establishes the requirement of an annual statement of financial interest with the ethics board and it further promulgates rules and regulations for what the annual statement must contain, how those statements are controlled and maintained and what happens if an employee or officer fails to comply with the filing requirements. This ordinance also creates an ethics board composed of three members appointed by the mayor with the council's approval and establishes the terms of the board members, the qualifications to serve, guidelines for conducting business, the board's powers and duties and the board's required training and education. This ordinance establishes protocols for filing complaints alleging ethics violations and how to conduct those investigations. This ordinance establishes due process rights for individuals against whom ethics complaints are lodged, including the right to a hearing and the means and methods of conducting the hearing. This ordinance establishes the right to appeal if an individual is found by the ethics board to have violated the ethics code and it establishes a one-year statute of limitations for bringing an ethics complaint. The one-year limitation begins when the potential violation is first discovered. This ordinance provides that the ethics board may render advisory opinions concerning matters under its jurisdiction and the effect thereof. This ordinance provides that no officer or employee or city or any city agency shall be subject to reprisal or any action which tends to discourage, restrain, deter, prevent, interfere with, coerce or discriminate against any person who in good faith reports a potential ethics violation. This ordinance establishes a penalty section which states as follows. Except when another penalty is specifically set forth in this ordinance or by state or federal laws, any officer or employee of the city or any city agency who is found by the ethics board to have violated any provision of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a civil offense and may be subject to a civil fine imposed by the board not to exceed $1,000, which may be recovered by the city in a civil action in the nature of a debt if the offender fails to pay the penalty within the prescribed period of time. In addition to any other penalties which may be imposed under this ordinance, an officer or employee of the city or its agencies who is found to be violating a provision of this ordinance shall forfeit to the city or the city agency any amount equal to the economic benefit or gain which the officer or employee is determined by the ethics board to have realized as a result of the violation. In addition to all other penalties which may be imposed under this ordinance, a finding by the ethics board that an officer or employee of the city or one of its agencies is guilty of a violation shall be sufficient cause for removal, suspension, demotion or other disciplinary action by the mayor of the city, the city agency or by any other officer or agency having power of removal or discipline. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law, but no earlier than July 1, 2025.
Thank you, Rich. This is a very important ordinance. This is the second reading of this ordinance. You've had a chance to look over it. First of all, we'll entertain a motion that we consider voting on this on second reading.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Neal.
Yes.
Wilkinson. Burris.
Yes.
Benell.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Yes.
All right.
That's nine.
We have nine yeses and the ordinance passes on second reading. All right.
Next item is the second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-3049, the city of Glasgow's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through 6/30/2025. Being hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow that its annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 is amended as follows. Section one, there is hereby transferred $98,400 from the Parks and Recreation Contract Improvement Account to the Parks and Recreation Payment of Borrowed Monies Account for interest payment on the bond proceed monies. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Again, this is the second reading of this ordinance we read at the last meeting, amending the ordinance. Amending the annual budget is basically what this is doing and I will entertain a motion that we bring it to the floor for a vote.
Motion, Benell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Burris.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Shoemaker.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Benell.
Yes.
That's all nine.
The second reading passes of that particular ordinance. Rich.
Next item is municipal order, appointing Aaron Woosley to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustments for the city of Glasgow to fulfill the unexpired term of Jonathan Belcher, whose three-year term expired June 30, 2026. This appointment is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this 26th day of May, 2025.
All right, you have heard the first reading of this municipal ordinance, or actually this is the second reading you were made aware of at the last, at the last council meeting. But for Mr. Woosley to fill the unexpired term of the late Jonathan Belcher, I'll entertain a motion that we vote on this particular order.
Motion.
Okay, from Ms. Patrick. And is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Mayor Ross, I'll just make mention that we change the date on that to make sure that coincides with the day's date.
Okay, all right. We, did you note that, Madam Clerk? Okay, all right. Well, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And we have a little new business to deal with here tonight, too.
Next item, mayor, is an ordinance establishing a new animal control code, chapter 90 of the city's code of ordinances. And I'll be reading from a summary as well. This ordinance repeals the existing chapter 90 of the city's code of ordinances and adopts a new chapter 90 which updates, adds to and rectifies some inconsistencies in the prior ordinance. This ordinance adds a number of definitions to help in the interpretation of the ordinance. It outlines the powers of the Animal Control Department. It adds a new article dealing with the torture of dogs and cats, defines torture for purposes of enforcement and establishes the offenses of cruelty to animals first and second degree and clarifies what, and clarifies what is not a valid defense to those offenses. The ordinance adds a new article dealing with pre-conviction seizure and imple- The ordinance adds a new article dealing with pre-conviction seizure and impoundment of animals. It adds a new article dealing with post-conviction forfeiture of animals. It adds a new article requiring dogs to be on a leash or properly confined on the owner's property to prevent running at large and establishes penalties for violations thereof. The penalties are a sliding scale from the first offense to a fourth or subsequent offense. First offense is a $50 fine, second offense $75, third offense $150, fourth and subsequent offense is $250 with the potential of jail time added to the fine. This ordinance adds a section establishing penalties for violations relating to the prohibiting of livestock running at large. Again, there is a sliding scale from $100 for the first offense to $500 for a fourth and subsequent offense in a 12-month period. This ordinance adds a section clarifying that businesses utilizing goats for targeted grazing shall not violate the no livestock prohibition. This ordinance adds a section making it unlawful to keep roosters in the city limits. This ordinance adds a section establishing penalties for fowl, F-O-W-L, running at large, the same sliding scale for penalties as with dogs and cats. It adds a section establishing penalties for violating provisions related to the number of dogs or cats permitted at one particular residence. Again, the penalty section being the same as the penalty sections for dogs and cats running at large. It adds a section making it a nuisance to own, keep or harbor any pet which does one or more specific actions outlined in the ordinance such as continuous barking, trespassing on others' property and so forth. And it adds a new article dealing with the sale of dogs or cats and requiring an occupational license under certain circumstances, violation of which would be a $500 fine. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the reading of this ordinance. First of all, since this is the first reading under new business, I will entertain a motion that we bring it to a vote up on the floor.
Motion, Benell.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have discussion. Chief Howie, are you going to discuss this any further or shit?
We brought some folks from Brawa here to help answer some of the questions.
Officer Furlong is here and Ms. Taylor and Ms. Connie is there, too, so we have lots of smart people about this. If you all have questions about it, then we would use this discussion period to ask those questions.
So, am I reading this right? If a cat is outside, it needs to be on a leash?
No, ma'am. Kelly, can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry. It's okay. No, ma'am. What I'm asking is the prior ordinance is dogs and cats had to be on a leash or confined to their property. What I'm asking for now is it only to be read as dogs, no leash law on cats? And simply, and I will explain myself, the reason why I'm asking for this is because there is a TNR program that's a trap neuter release on cats and there is many cities across Kentucky where I've been doing a lot of my schooling in Louisville on different things. They are having numerous of good things happening, taking all leashes away from the cats and it helps the shelters open up the trap neuter release into the cities. We already have that in the county, am I correct? We already have that in the county, but it will open up the city and it also gives Brawa more grants to be able to apply for that they are not allowed to apply for now because our whole Baron County is not a trap neuter release. So if I can, you know, take the leash law away from the cats, it would be wonderful.
I didn't even know one existed for cats.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And if I'm not mistaken, that ordinance has not been changed since 1980.
In here, you know, there's several sections where you've added information and modified information that you've added, just going to give you more guidance.
Yes, sir. It's going to give us more black and white of our job, what we can and cannot do. We are questioned on day-to-day basis and you can ask the chief, I've had to call him multiple times. I cannot find it nowhere under black and white. If I have it in black and white, I can.
I think that's important for us as council members and for the public at large to know that we're doing a better job at defining these rules, just like on the leash on that. That's a great example and some of the other additions have been made to it. So I really support the work that you and others put into this.
Thank you.
Generally, then, if you've got four dogs and four cats and they're all in the house...
No, sir. That ordinance has been in play for several, several years. In the city limits, it's four animals, a combination of your dogs and cats at a residence. So if you have two families living in there, you still only are allowed to have four animals. That ordinance I did not try to change. That is still what was in the past.
Is there anything that really, you know, this is, I don't know all this and I haven't, I'm sorry, I haven't detailed this through, but for the common public, and I'm putting myself, what would be anything that would really stick out that's going to be, somebody might say, oh, I didn't, that's really different than what we were doing here. Is there, I mean, maybe all this or is there?
I think what I get questioned about a lot is our ordinance reads, our today ordinance reads, on our fines, it cannot be no less than 10, no more than 100. So I feel there's not really a guideline of what we can charge. So if we have that, I think that will be more questionable. Oh, so everyone's going to get charged $50, not me get charged 30 and the other one get charged 70. So I think if we had that guideline of how, what offenses it charge.
Consistent.
We need consistency.
I question the rooster part.
Oh, yes, the rooster part.
Right now, there are people that have large amounts of chickens and they have roosters. Get more complaints about the roosters.
Crowing.
Than anything else and there's really no. That might be the only thing that comes out.
I don't think we should have roosters in the city.
This says?
No roosters.
No roosters.
Does that cover, when you say they're only allowed like four animals?
No, no, that is poultry. Birds are poultry. Animals is dogs and cats and that's defined in that ordinance. It's dogs and cats, ma'am.
But what if they are a breeder of dogs? Are they covered?
Four animals.
So what if they have a litter of eight puppies?
They have eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks and that's in there. If they do have a litter, it's eight weeks.
So is this, that's new, right?
No, that is not.
Okay, okay. So is anybody grandfathered in if they already have?
No, that is not.
And that's inside and outside dogs and cats?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, there's a large number of poultry items in the city. I'm sure you're well aware of it. There's been an increase in, it doesn't matter which neighborhood, for us, the number that you have. So I guess I'm questioning, you know, when you say folks that have chickens, if they're, I mean, you have roosters and that's why they breed, you know what I'm saying? So what's the inhibition that you want to do when you're saying, well, we don't want to have roosters in town for that purpose?
Well, you do have a nuisance of, you know, roosters crow at 4:00 in the morning and they don't, they don't stop for a while. You have the nuisance where between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, you're not supposed to have a continuance.
Well.
So, and roosters do continue, so. And I get a lot of calls about roosters. So, right next to someone's bedroom window, even though they're in a coop, they don't run at large, but they're, they're still there. Houses are so close together in the city.
I could cross the line and just say, every morning at 4:00, all the birds.
Yes, I understand. I do understand. I do understand. I do understand, Trig.
So, yeah. So, large number, again, I'm going there, have chickens for their egg production. I mean, I think everybody understands why they're doing it, you know, for their own farm raise or whatever. So is there limitations on the number of chickens they can have?
No, sir.
And are the...
As long as they are kept in a coop, they cannot free range.
All right, that's where I was going. So, cause how can you keep chickens in the yard?
Right, they're supposed to be in an enclosure.
So they can be in an enclosed backyard.
As long as they cannot escape.
I have chickens.
A lot of folks have chickens now in this city.
Yeah.
They're roosters now.
Yeah.
All right. Good discussion. Any other discussion?
I just want to thank Chief Howie and Shelley and the different staff and board members from Brawa. When the Animal Control Board came together for the first time this fall, they have all been working very hard on this to look at both city ordinances and county ordinances to try to get some things worked out and I just, we really appreciate Shelley, all the work that you've put into this and...
Okay, all right, very good. Yes, and Shelley is very, very talented and, you know, she's, you got an answer for about any kind of an animal problem anybody might have.
I love my job.
I really do appreciate all of your efforts. So there being no more discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving first reading of this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, the ordinance passes. Something else for new business, Rich?
This is a resolution declaring certain Glasgow Police Department property surplus pursuant to law and authorizing its disposition. That whereas the Glasgow Police Department possesses certain personal property which is more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, whereas the personal property represents property that was seized by the department and is not needed by the department, and whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized according to law. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, pursuant to KRS 82.083, Subparagraph 3, the following written determinations are made. A, the property to be surplus is the personal property more particularly described on Exhibit A. B, there was never any intended use of this property by the department as it was acquired by seizure. Subparagraph C, the reason why is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is that the seized property is not needed for the department's operations and the funds to be derived from its sale would be used to fund the department's ongoing needs. Subparagraph D, the method of disposition to be used shall either be by public auction or by any other means permitted under KRS 82.083. Section 2, this property described on Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Section 3, this property shall be disposed of by public auction or by any other means authorized by KRS 82.083. Section 4, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary in order to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
All right, we are declaring property that the police department owns as surplus so that we can sell it through auction or whatever other means. I will indicate a, I will accept a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Norris. Okay. Second from Ms. Kirkpatrick? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, the resolution does pass. Very good. Want to do something, we're moving to the announcement portion. Well, before we get to the announcements, I'm sitting here looking at Paul Bragg. If you went to the cemetery for Memorial Day, you saw a beautiful cemetery, thanks to Paul Bragg and all of his hard work, as well as the hard work of the street department, of the recreation department, the police department, the community band, it was something special. Not everybody has such a ceremony. I just want to, didn't want to let the meeting end without thanking you, Paul. That's right. Now, I'm moving into the announcement portion and I indicated on the agenda, we have an update on the Cleveland Avenue property. So in order to do it, I thought that I would, I sort of prepared the update and we would do it as an announcement because there is no action to be taken at this particular time, but this is an announcement that I'm really, really, really tickled to make, so listen very carefully. Back in September of last year, the City of Glasgow purchased about 160 acres of land on Cleveland Avenue for the purpose of future development. The purchase was made because 160 acres of developable land does not come available very often here in the city. Since that time, there's been lots of questions and suggestions and scenarios that have evolved. After several months of due process of meetings with engineers, with developers and city department heads, we are proud to announce the first project for the city-acquired property on Cleveland Avenue. This will be presented to the council in much more detail for approval at a later meeting. But here we go. Barron County Judge Executive Jamie Byrd has a vision for a sports complex to be built. The City of Glasgow is embracing that vision by providing the property to build the much anticipated sports complex within that 160-acre plot. Judge Byrd applied for a grant for hiring an architect to design the sports complex. She could not apply for that grant without a place to build it. Judge Byrd applied for the grant for hiring an architect to design the sports complex. Negotiations began and the city moved forward with an agreement. We are providing 15 acres to the county for where to build a sports complex. Not too long ago, not too long afterward, I should say, the architecture grant was approved and the pieces are now falling together. The recreational endeavor is a natural way to start developing more residential properties, more retail opportunities, including restaurants, within the site of Red Cross Elementary, of the soccer complex, industrial drive and the outer loop. Situated on Highway 1297 and Cleveland Avenue, it's already, now get this, it's already on the schedule to be widened. Going to be sidewalks on both sides from the bypass to the soccer complex. Over half of that property needed to complete the road project has already been purchased and the other half, Joe Plunk told me today, has been assigned to agents to finish the acquisition of the property. So the road, the widening of the road is just about to start. I think it's in fiscal year '27. That's going to happen, but I felt like that I really just wanted to make this announcement tonight because it's the first of what hopefully will be a number of things that we're doing with that property out there for us to grow our community. But you, and Judge Byrd talks about the sports complex and she's very excited about it. The city is excited about it, too, to the point that we thought it would be a good gesture to work forward and to provide the property, the 15 acres, to build a sports complex on such a beautiful piece of property. So that is the announcement. Now, right here in the front is a gentleman by the name of Rob Campbell. Rob is with the firm of QK4. He is our engineer on a number of projects. He came down because there could be a possibility that we want the council members, if you have a question about anything, about where this has been and where it is going, we're getting it, this is the first thing that we've made public about it, but it's all going to be public from this point forward. And so we really wanted to have Rob here. If you all would like to ask him questions, he's going to be available, but I just wanted to kind of let you know about this announcement. All right. With that being said, I'm going to move to the other announcement. Get ready for a fun-filled day at Sip, Shop and Stroll, happening Saturday, May 31st, 10 to 4 on the Glasgow Square. Community event has something for everyone. Bring the whole family and enjoy a lively atmosphere full of local shopping, delicious food trucks, unique arts and crafts and inflatable attractions for the kids. Everything from handcrafted treasures to tasty treats while soaking up the festive vibes. It's a perfect way to spend a spring Saturday supporting local businesses and making great memories. It's this Saturday, it's much anticipated. The Sip, Shop and Stroll is always a, call it a sellout. It's absolutely a fascinating event that everybody comes to. The rain kind of messes it up, but we're hoping that we'll be okay with that for this Saturday. It's exciting. This past Friday night, I entertained Glasgow groups with Ms. April Russell and a number of committee members as well as... of committee members, as well as city employees, worked to put on the very first Entertained Glasgow event. It was the big black Cadillac as the headliner for that night, and it was amazing with as many things going on in town, as we had, the crowd we had for that, and the people, I guess, Entertained Glasgow started off as a good idea, and now it's developed into an expectation, as seen by the number of people that attended on, on Friday night, and how many people are already talking about the next event. So I wanted to be sure and talk about that. So thank you, April, and thanks to all of the, all of the crew. And finally, save the date for Movie in the Park. June 20th is the date at Beaver Creek Park for a magical evening under the stars, our much anticipated Movie in the Park event. Bring your blankets, your lawn chairs, your favorite people for a relaxing night of cinema. The Great Outdoors will be announcing their featured film in more exciting details as the date approaches. Stay tuned, make plans to be a part of the fun, family-friendly, community tradition, which is the Movie in the Park. It's a nice place to do it. So, we've had an eventful council meeting, and we're to the point to where I can entertain a motion that we would adjourn this meeting.
Question.
Hold on a second. We're not there.
I may have just completely missed, is this Rob out here?
Rob, Rob Campbell.
He's the architect for the...
Engineer, uh-huh.
Engineer for the possibility of...
City of Glasgow, uh-huh.
For the...
QK4, uh-huh.
Okay. That's, okay, I was thinking you saying architect.
No, 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 that's, we're not involved in building it, we're involved in providing a place for it to be. Rob has been involved with his other people from QK4. He's been involved from day one, developing the property, looking at, what do they call that, ALTA survey, and they have all different things, elevations, making sure of what we were buying, making sure what it can be used for, and they have been involved since day one, and he...
The 15 acres that we're working with the city or with the county, is it location of that, of that property?
The 15 acres...
Middle of it, it's always been?
Specifically, exactly where it fits on the property's not been finally determined yet. They've only given us the amount of area they have to have, and we're talking through the best positioning of that. So that's something will be a group effort.
And we felt like that not having an architect, we were going to be handicapped to try to figure out where to put something like that until an architect is on board.
That's right. Yeah, now they've got the architect on board, we can work collaboratively to pick that location.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, no, no worries.
I had some questions for the architect there.
He's a...
We got to ask the architect questions.
Yeah, well, he's got, he's got lots of answers, too. He's a good guy to talk to. He's been doing this for a while, and has been, has helped us out a whole lot. It's going to help us bring it home.
I'll stick around for anybody, I mean...
So the 15 acres, we don't actually give them the 15 acres? How's that, how do you state that?
It's, it's our contribution to the project.
Okay.
But that's, we'll do that in the form of an official ordinance transaction that comes to the council when we have enough information from the architect and all that to put it into, for Rich to write it in legal language.
All right.
Mayor Ross, before we leave this evening, I think we need to acknowledge the efforts done by Entertained Glasgow for a great event on Friday night, so to April and everybody else, great job.
It was good.
She didn't do anything.
Huh? She didn't do anything, is what Councilman Neal says?
I don't, I believe Councilman Neal is correct on that one.
You did plenty. All right, and I do want to acknowledge, since we're doing all the acknowledgement, Beverly Harbison at the 911 Dispatch Center has been sending her employees over here to learn about how the city government works. The, one of the newest employees over there is Administrative Assistant Nick Cotton. Nick is really making a difference over there at the 911 Emergency Center with all the bookkeeping and taking care of all the things, so Nick, we're glad to have you here tonight. Nick Cotton, thank you for being here, sir. Now, what do you think about entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all so much for being here.